Okay, it's ten o'clock. We're gonna get started. Everybody wants to get in their spot. Would you welcome first to the November eighth Planning Commission meeting? Glad you're here. Would you please stand and join me with the flag, Sullivan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, roll call, please.
Mr. Haughey.
Here.
Mr. Hersaug.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Here.
Mr. Sevison is absent. Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, now, EJ, Planning Director.
Need to turn yourself on there. Thank you. We wanna start out on a good note this morning with the technology. You know, it seems like we just met, so I have really nothing to report except, you know, what's coming up as far as planning commissions, and we're finally dialed in on meetings. You know, we have one meeting coming up December thirteenth. For that agenda, we have, there's a multitude of EIR projects that are coming down the pipe right now, and there may be as many as three draft EIRs that are released in the next couple of weeks that would be ready for a draft EIR hearing in December. So I'm forewarning you.
So it could be a long meeting.
Well, it will be a full day on December thirteenth, so I would assume we would have a recess in between and have, you know, probably a morning and afternoon session. And, you know, by next week, we should really have doubt in what projects will be coming to hold those hearings. And then, starting out in January, we're gonna be in Tahoe, the first meeting, which is January tenth. And our calendar, Sue's already put together the 2019 calendar. We'll be sharing that with you shortly, but we'll have it on the agenda to approve in December for the following year. So that's all I have for today.
Any questions for EJ?
Thank you.
Thank you, EJ. Appreciate it. Now, is the opportunity for public comment, things that are not on our agenda. And so I would ask that you hold it to three minutes, and as long as it's green, you're good to go. Yellow, you're, have one minute to wrap it up, and then when I turn spread, I would ask you to...
Take a second. In response to what EJ just said, I believe that...
Could you first give us your name?
Sandy Harris, Granite Bay.
Thank you.
I believe those three EIRs might be pertinent to my area, and if they all come up in December, they're all big projects. That's a heck of a lot to put on the public to try to get through EIRs and get up here for all-day hearings. Thank you. I wish you could spread them out a little bit.
There will be, obviously, opportunity to submit comments to that for a period of time afterwards, so I would encourage even if you, there isn't time to review that, to certainly submit any comment.
Hi, I'm Chris Johnson. I'm also from Granite Bay, and this is kind of a general question. Maybe somebody here or in the Planning Department can answer it for me. I'm trying to understand how or what the county policy is on allowing county planners to work on all these variance requests, the NMDs and all this stuff. I personally once worked in a Midwest city planning department, and while we had to do a lot of reviews, we were really never allowed to do the work and present it. I see that there is, you know, a list of fees and all this other kind of stuff, and actually, the prices are pretty darn good. I wouldn't blame people for choosing to use the Planning Department. But we have so much other work going on. You know, I was here last month. We were looking at the affordable housing, and that plan is a little bit behind, and we were looking at the trails and everything else. So it kinda is puzzling to me how we make the decision on all these other little applications that we handle. So maybe the staff or somebody could answer that question. Thank you.
Would, EJ, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I totally understand the question. I mean...
Oh, okay. Let me say it again.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, coming from, you know, having worked in the Planning Department myself as an assistant planner, and we also had staff, we never would allow the staff to actually do all the work that your staff does in preparing all these documents, attending all the meetings and so on. Usually, it was a representative of the applicant, and they would hire a planning service or something like that to fulfill all that work. So my question is, you know, you guys seem to do a lot of these, and the people have to work late hours and everything else. I look at what you're charging, I think, hey, the county ain't charging enough to really cover all the work you do. How do you make the decision on which of these projects you allow planning staff to work on?
So we have, you know, we have a large planning staff here in Auburn and also up in Tahoe, and we process a multitude of applications through the year, everything from sign permits, administrative approvals, all the way up to rezonings and general plan amendments. So, and we have, you know, we have fees, application fees are charged for, you know, the time spent for staff. Some of those, do we recover, recoup our costs on all those? Not all the time. The larger, major projects, most of the, the majority of projects that actually come before this commission are at-cost projects. Those are projects that are billed to the applicant, and they pay, you know, they pay for the staff time that is spent on those projects.
So when you look at the revenue for the county for the year, is that shown in the revenue for the county budget?
Yeah, so if you look at, to review our county budget, that information is in the budget about, you know, the revenue and expenditures and so forth.
I guess, as a citizen, what I'm concerned about is, I'm not sure you guys are charging enough, and the other, the other key issue is, as a member of the public, when you come to these meetings and you see planning staff present something, you assume, oh, it's okay, it's locked and loaded, ready to go. And so I think there's a real perception problem with that, and I think it's something you need to be concerned about, because as I say, a lot of other municipalities don't do the level of work that you guys do. That's my point.
Okay. And just one more thing to add. So the county is embarking on a fee study for not only planning fees, but building fees, all the land development fees. We're just about ready to get a consultant under contract to do that. We just went through the process with procurement, so that's something that'll be going on probably most of next year as we go through that process, and that will be something that will be, you know, before the decision makers.
So you could basically, so basically, you could farm it up, because one of the challenges, do you have enough staff on hand for all the stuff that's coming in? Like, we just heard all the stuff that's coming up, because you've gotta carry that staff, whether you've got all that work to do or not. So it's just, are we doing the right thing with our, with our county budget? And I think the idea of maybe, you know, using outside variable forces to do this work would be better, and it would make it look better from the public standpoint. Thank
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak on something that's not on our agenda?
Hello. My name is Jane Nagri, 4502 Olive Ranch Road, Granite Bay, and I would like to address the concerns of my community that we had regarding the changes that were made to the tiny house Zeta right before it was approved. Gene Davies, the representative for Reliable Home Solutions, was granted extended time to present his product, the park trailer, and as a result, the Zeta was amended to include parked trailers. It appears that the addition of this word "trailer" was to deal with a problem that concerned one citizen in Placer, and it will also greatly benefit the Reliable Home Solutions. When the county presented the Zeta to the Granite Bay MAC, we had a very large audience, and the main concern there was that word "trailer" not be included. We were reassured many times by the county staff that "trailer" was not part of the Zeta. Our MAC said that there were too many unanswered questions, and the proposal lacked important specifics and should not proceed until this was rectified. Now, with no notification to the citizens of Placer County, the word "trailer" is included. This happened with total disregard for the planning process that we have in place. How can we trust the Placer planning when we are promised one thing by the county, and then it is changed at the last minute? And apparently, the change was to meet the needs of that one person and to benefit this Reliable Homes. We would just ask that Placer County and our Planning Commission would consider that, because all the citizens that were met by the county representative, we were all told that the word "trailer" would not be included. And these, I agree, his product looks wonderful, and they don't look like trailers, but with the word "trailer" in there, trailers are going to come. So, but we would like to thank our Planning Commissioner, Jeffrey Moss, who represented our community, and he voted no on the tiny house unwield Zeta. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else, again, not related to our agenda?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Berkam. I live in Granite Bay, and I would like to actually second and extend what Ms. Nagri just said. I, it isn't the first time that something has come up before the Planning Commission, and I'll call it out of process, for the tiny houses. I actually wrote a letter to Director Evalde, and the planner that presented tiny houses stating that it's not going through processes. The general process is that it goes to the MAC as an information item, it goes back as an action item, and then the recommendation goes to planning, and then planning makes a recommendation to the supervisors. That is the standard procedure for doing things. That is not what happened with tiny houses. With tiny houses, the information item, the MAC rejected it, basically said it's not ready for prime time, as Ms. Nagri said. And so we, the expectation from the community, the room was full at the Granite Bay MAC. The expectation was that that was going to return with, hopefully, some feedback taken into account and some specificity on the questions that both the MAC and the audience had, and that did not happen. That, we feel like an end runaround happened. The, it came to this forum, and it was also changed. The same thing happened with the zoning text amendment. The, there was an actual different document that was presented, so there's change control issues with what happens at the MAC, what's being presented to planning, and then what's being presented to the Board of Supervisors. I think that's a serious, serious misstep in terms of the equity of what's being presented, the legality of what you're signing off on, because what's being presented should be consistent all the way through. So I hope that, that there aren't rush to push these things through. I have my suspicions that, being the end of year, that a lot of the housing elements and things need to be signed off, and so to make the numbers for housing, a lot of this is happening, but I think that it should be reintroduced back through the process and gone through with change control. Thank you.
I do believe that there was sort of a filtering process and that there were some concerns as it related to the first run at the tiny houses, and there was some adjustments made to address those issues. And I don't think there's any rush. This, this commission does not rush on anything, even if the, you know, I don't believe staff rushes anything. We believe that we have to do our due diligence to serve the community in a very thorough way of reviewing each one of these implications to not just Granite Bay, but the whole county. So the time is spent that needs to be put into it, and we listen to the community, we listen to their concerns, and try to make adjustments. I think we all know that the housing issue is a real hot-button issue, not just in Placer County, but throughout the state, and we're seeing some legislation coming out of Sacramento related to that. And I believe we're gonna see less local control and more state control as it relates to housing in the future. But we, as the county, need to be addressing multiple avenues of how we address the critical housing need here, and I don't think that we will be compromising the integrity of our communities to open up other opportunities, because there will be a review process that will be done and adhered to by the county. And this, I don't believe this issue has gone before the supervisors, so there is still an opportunity to voice your concern before it has given final approval. So I'll just leave it at that, and we can kind of move on, unless, EJ, you wanted to make any comments.
Yeah, Chairman, the only thing I wanted to add is that this is your recommendation on the tiny house. ZTA is tentatively scheduled for the December eighteenth Board of Supervisors meeting. And that meeting will, is gonna be at a location down in Roseville, my understanding is, possibly at the Fairgrounds. Don't quote me on that, but be looking for where that location is when that notice comes out.
Anybody else who would like to speak and public comment? I believe one of the Commissioners would like to speak on something, but I wanna give the audience first opportunity at that. So I don't see anybody else. Rich?
Okay, I'm Richard Johnson, and I will say that I'm a registered professional forester, have been for about forty years now, or over forty years. And so I wanna reflect a little bit on timber preserve zoning, which has come up in previous meetings, and I wanna reflect on that a little bit, just so we have maybe a more complete understanding of what my perception of that is. And timber preserve zoning, as opposed to the Williamson Act, is an actual zone. It's not a contract with the county. And as such, it was enacted by the State of California, and the purpose of it was is to provide for the growth and harvest of timber. So that's the primary purpose of that particular zone. And just to kind of highlight a little bit why that came about is, you know, one of the things that's differed about timber production is, you know, final harvest on the best sites is not likely to happen until eighty years have gone by, and on some of the other sites, it can be a hundred and fifty years. And so basically, with the standard taxation process, timber production wouldn't be able to compete with residential development and commercial development. And so the large tract holders were given the opportunity to join timber preserves zoning, and they had to come up with a management plan for the long-term management of the property, and that's really what it's all about. Now, the zoning does permit some residential use for caretaker houses, and that really is incidental to the purpose of the zoning. And so at any rate, usually, if you look at what timber preserve zoning really provides for and how the timber management process happens, is, it's very unlikely that in a zoned area for timber preserve zoning that you really need a caretaker house, because the work happens by contractors, and it's not every year. Some years, it may be five years away or whatever. And so at any rate, I would say that the caretaker house, if somebody wants to put a caretaker house into timber preserve zoning, should be very rare and should be very strongly justified. And so at any rate, I know we've recently dealt with the case where we had a 3,000-square-foot house in a small timber preserve zoning area, and I would say that in the future, hopefully, we don't see that happen again, where variances ask for to do that. But any rate, I guess what my suggestion would be is that the Planning Department get in, and get with the Agriculture Commission and take a look at what timber preserving, really zoning really is, and maybe reflect on that in future, future proposals that happen in, in the timber preserve zone. And so that's basically what my recommendation would be.
So what I'm hearing is possibly bring back, maybe early next year, just an informational item on the TPZ zoning and some background with that.
I think that would be good. We, you know, we obviously struggled with this issue when that, when that item came before us, and I think one of the struggles is that it was obviously a very large structure on a pretty small timber-related parcel, and whether there's justification in the future, I think we've got to call, we call that into kind of question, so I think it'd be important to bring it back to us, talk about that.
We'll be happy to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Rich. Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment period, and we'll go to the consent agenda. We only have one item, which is our minutes from our last meeting. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
One, two.
Yes. Oh, okay, and we have, gonna have one abstention.
Because I was your last one.
Okay, so we've, a roll call, Sue?
I'm sorry, you didn't get the second.
Uh, that was Jeff.
Okay. So we have a first by Commissioner Rokuchi and a second by Commissioner Moss, so if I can have a vote from Mr. Haughey.
Yes.
Mr. Hersaug?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstain.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna move to our 10:05 item on amendment for the Meadow Vista Community Plan related to the bicycle and pedestrian safety on Placer Hills Road. So Stephanie and Nikki are gonna present this, I believe. All right.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Stephanie Holloway with Public Works. I'm excited to kind of open this item for you this morning with a brief introduction of a new staff member with Public Works. Katie Jackson comes to us as of August to our transportation team. Her focus is really gonna be on our long-range transportation strategies related to general plan, community plans, and she comes with a wealth of knowledge on our capital, on capital improvement programs, and so we have her focused on that. I'm gonna let her give a brief introduction, give you some background, but we're excited to have her.
Right.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Katie Jackson, and I'm an associate civil engineer with the Public Works and Facilities. I, well, I'm new to Placer County. I have about a decade of experience in the transportation and engineering and planning industry. Most recently, I worked for Eldorado County, working on their long-range transportation infrastructure and funding projects, and before that, I was, worked as a consultant, and I had the honor of working on some of the largest infrastructure projects in this region, including the I-8065 interchange and the Golden One Center in downtown Sacramento. I am a licensed civil engineer and a licensed traffic engineer, and I've lived in this region almost my entire life, and I recently moved to this area, and I'm happy to be a part of the Placer County team and to raise my kids here in this community, so thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Good to have you here, and your wealth of experience will certainly be a huge benefit to us, so good to have you here.
And now I'll hand it off to Nikki Strigan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman and fellow Commissioners, good to be before you today. Today's item is actually a result of two efforts, and pardon me, I'm in the middle of a cold, so I'm gonna keep my tea close, but it's a result of two work efforts, one that you actually were presented two weeks ago, and that's the Placer County Regional Bike Way Plan, and the other is the safety, the amendment to the Meadow Vista Community Plan pertaining to safety and pedestrian and bikeway improvements. So both are kind of, obviously, from a procedural standpoint, they amend the Meadow Vista Community Plan, the same community plan, so we decided to bundle these together into a single item, so these will move forward together to the board as well. Let's see. So by way of background here, I'm gonna start with the safety-related improvements, the amendment pertaining to safety on Placer Hills Road, and then we'll talk about bikeway plan stuff towards the end of the presentation. So, but by way of background, the area that we are talking about, of course, is the Meadow Vista Community. The map in the upper left, of course, shows Meadow Vista along the I-80 corridor, and then the road that we are talking about in particular is Placer Hills Road. So this is the Clipper Gap, Meadow Vista exit, Placer Hills Road runs right here, the town center of Placer Hills Road, which runs from Meadow Vista Road to Combi Lane. That's sort of our study area. So this map shows our study area. This is Meadow Vista Lane right here, Meadow Vista Road, I'm sorry. Placer Hills Road runs like, runs right along here, and this is Combi Road to the north. So the study area really encompasses what we call the town center, and this is a land use map showing current land uses, commercial shown in red, residential shown in yellow, parks and open space shown in green, and then we did a land use inventory of some of the existing land uses. You can see those are the callouts here on your screen, too. So by way of background, a couple of years ago, the community had actually approached Public Works about some safety concerns on Placer Hills Road, mainly pedestrian and bike safety, and Public, Public Works then conducted a few workshops in 2017 to get some feedback on, you know, the opportunities and constraints and potential design considerations to make those improvements, and through that process identified with planning that a community plan amendment was required to the circulation element of the Meadow Vista Community Plan. So what's outlined in the community plan, and Katie will talk about this later in the presentation, this is big, seventy-foot-wide right-of-way that has two drive lanes going northbound, southbound, a two-way left-turn lane down the middle, bike lanes, sidewalks, et cetera, and it kind of results in this oversized roadway that the community just didn't feel was really part of the vision of their town center. So the amendment addresses that. It provides some flexibility in design to then start talking about some of these improvements to retain a smaller right-of-way and make some of these pedestrian and bike improvements. This is sort of a look at some of the existing conditions on, on Placer Hills Road. On the left, you see the intersection between Placer Hills Road and Meadow Lane, so that's about midway through the project area, and then on the right, you see this informal path. This is not unusual to see this kind of throughout the study area, and a patchwork of sidewalks, believe it or not, throughout Placer Hills Road. So those are sort of, some of the things we're hoping to address with the community through this process. Public Works was able to get some feedback through their community workshop process, and these are some of the common themes that they identified. Number one was pedestrian and bike safety, so finding a sort of separated or designated area for bikes and peds, the need for the sidewalk, a sidewalk of some sort, whether on one or two sides, or to look more rural in character than urban in character. That was identified through the process. Traffic calming measures, so treatments to the road to slow traffic down, that was also identified, multi-use, and then streetscaping was identified. So streetscaping, I kind of like to define as the street and its visual effect. So often in the planning field, we talk about buildings and how those relate to people in terms of massing scale, height, and so forth. Well, streetscaping is similar. The relationship of the road to a driver, a pedestrian, or a cyclist, those users are kind of encompassed in, in streetscaping. It can also identify beautification, things like landscaping, benches, trash cans, and that kind of thing. That's also kind of covered in, in that definition. So that was identified by the community as well. All of these things sort of taken together lead us to a concept that transportation planners and planners kind of call complete streets. And so these are some examples that we're gonna show you that the amendment could eventually lead to. So how I define a complete street, or how it's traditionally defined as, is a facility that integrates people and place into, into a design so that all of the users, motorists, pedestrians, bicyclists, and even transit users in some cases, can sort of coexist together and safely. I think complete streets kind of gets a, an urban type of, of, people think it's a very urban concept, and I think there's application in all contexts. And so that is typically made through a very collaborative process with the community, a community design or participatory design-type process, which Public Works will lead along with planning and the community come next year. A lot of benefits to complete streets, including safety. There are some public health benefits related to walking and biking and kind of getting, getting outside. There are aesthetic benefits. There's benefits in terms of better integration of the transportation system, and then as an added benefit, I think there's some economic development potential that the, that complete streets can bring to a community. So this slide sort of shows a cross-section and a plan view of complete streets. The one on the left shows a sidewalk, dedicated bike lane, a roadway, safe crosswalks, those kinds of things. Planting strips can be incorporated into complete streets. And then this plan view on the right-hand side shows that narrower kind of roadway. There, these features here are called curb extensions. You see them kind of periodically shown, periodically implemented here, and those sort of narrow the field of vision for a driver and inherently slow traffic down, so...
We have a question.
Question for you.
Sure.
The, the area of pavement between those curb extensions, what is the purpose of that?
Those, those are probably parking spaces.
Parking?
In this particular example, those are probably parking spaces.
Okay. Just general comment before I lose sight of it. Um, on North Sunrise in Roseville, um, close to Sierra Gardens, maybe, there's a bus turnout that's similar to this.
Also?
And it sucks cars into it thinking it's a turn lane for the next intersection, and then they pop right back out, and it really creates a traffic problem when it happens close to an intersection.
I would probably defer to my Public Works staff, but there's probably design-related issues.
Just a, a, like I say, a, a comment that, that I wanted to get out before it goes away.
Yeah, that might be a misstep in design, but maybe Stephanie wants to step in here.
Yes, and no, I appreciate that comment. Um, when we look at transit design, um, you know, over the years that has evolved as to, you know, where is the best place for people to navigate the intersection and then get on the bus, essentially? Um, the current state of the practice is to have those bus stops downstream or beyond the intersection because of that very issue, that we get conflicting movements, some people get confused if we've, if we're stopping to pick up, um, pedestrians on the near side of that intersection, so comment very well taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, well...
I'd like to make a comment on, on Jeff's, um, that's, that's near the, uh, just north of Frieser, right, on the right-hand side? I, I've lived in Roseville all my life, and I've, I think I, I think I've pulled into it, but now I know that I can't, if I wanna turn right and go down to Walmart. But I don't, I don't remember the last time I did it because now I quit doing it, but y- you're right, it's almost like, you know, you, you think it's a, cause it is close to an intersection, that's the extra lane there, uh, but then all of a sudden you, if there's a car or maybe a truck in front of you, you'll see that, you see the, 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 the curb extension right in front of you, you know, it, um, it, uh, but I don't think that's the only one I think I've ever been confused with, was that particular one. So I don't know if the other ones in Roseville or elsewhere are a little bit further away from, from the intersection, I don't know, but, but, but I have to agree with Mr. Moss on that one. Again, agreeing with Mr. Moss.
Okay, I'm gonna keep going here with a couple more examples. Um, and some of the other concepts that we talked about pertaining to complete streets with the, the Meadow Vista Community was this pedestrian refuge or refuge island, so it's a safe place for a pedestrian to, to be while they cross the street, and then it also is a traffic calming measure. So again, that concept of narrowing the field of vision for a, a motorist when they see this kind of a feature in, in the road. Um, and the one on the left is a, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, uh, it happens to have an island, um, as part, as part of this particular example, but sometimes they don't, uh, but those are essentially pedestrian crossings that alert vehicles stop. I'm gonna pass it over to Katie now, but in order to, I'll tee her up a little bit, in order to support the amendment, um, Public Works essentially wrote a traffic analysis to, to support that work, so I'll let Katie talk a little bit about that.
Thank you. So, as Nikki mentioned, the nineteen ninety-six community plan identified the need for this two-way left turn lane down the center of town, generally, uh, on Placerville Hills Road between Combi Road and Meadow Vista Road. And so the image on the left of this slide shows a page out of the community plan where you see that two-way left turn lane, and we would need to widen substantially to fit that through town. Um, and so the, and also that's a contrary to the community's desires for, you know, a nice walkable community with complete streets. So, um, when they approached us, we thought, uh, that we should evaluate the need for that two-way left turn lane. And so basically, when this community plan was developed, we would've looked at the land use, uh, projections over the life of the plan, which ran through the year twenty-ten at the time, and, uh, we would've assumed that traffic levels would've grown, uh, proportionally with land use, uh, over time. And so since we're beyond the horizon year of that community plan, we thought we should reevaluate the need for that two-way left turn lane from a capacity standpoint, and that's why we conducted the traffic operations analysis. So what we did was we went out and collected traffic counts during the AM peak hour, the PM peak hour, and also the school peak. We looked at the intersections themselves, as well as the roadway segments in between intersections, and we evaluated, um, the safety of the roadway, too, by collecting accident reports, uh, from the last three years. And what we found through our analysis was that it demonstrated that the intersections and the roadway segments operate acceptably today with the existing cross-section of the roadway, and that the, uh, the collision rate for the segment of, of Placerville Hills Road is lower than the statewide average for similar facilities. And so based on those two conclusions, Public Works is supportive of the community's request to kind of re-envision this, uh, downtown area and to add a little bit of flexibility into the language of the community plan to, um, maybe step away, a little bit farther away from this, uh, two-way left turn lane concept through town. So with that, I'll let, um, Nikki explain some of the, uh, flexibility.
Thanks, Katie. So the type of language that you're talking, we're talking about, which is attached to the staff report, is, um, effectively what's here up on the screen, and I won't, won't read through it all, but, um, it, it states that if, uh, if the two-way left turn lane isn't warranted, then another alternative could be, could be designed. Um, so you'll see that language throughout the strike-through red line changes in the amendment. I'll switch gears here a little bit before we, uh, talk about moving forward with both of these projects, uh, but the regional bikeway plan, um, obviously heard about it two weeks ago, and it amended a number of community plans. It was started, uh, as a joint effort between Public Works and Placerville County Transportation Planning Agency in two thousand seventeen. Um, about a year later, the PCTPA, um, accepted or approved the final regional bikeway plan. Um, Caltrans also accepted that plan, and then the Board of Supervisors just this past October adopted the regional bikeway plan, so that is well underway. The amendments that pertain to, uh, the Meadow Vista Community Plan predominantly are in the circulation element, they reference the twenty eighteen regional bikeway plan, they clarify some bikeway design criteria, they identify bikeway locations with a new map, which has been added to actually the trails element, which is a, a different section of the, uh, community plan, and this is what that map looks like. This is the central Placerville, Meadow Vista Central Placerville map of bikeways, and Meadow Vista is actually all the way down here, Placerville Hills Road being this one right here, this is a bike lane, uh, that's been identified on Placerville Hills Road, which coincides nicely with some of the, some of the work that's being done for, um, the, from, for the Placerville Hills Road section, but this is the, the map that will be added to the trails element. Uh, quite a bit of community outreach was done both for the Placerville County Regional Bike Way Plan and, uh, Placerville Hills Road improvements, so I've identified those with the parentheses here, but, um, quite a bit of online work was done for regional bikeway, in addition to forming a bikeway advisory committee, um, and bringing the item to the Municipal Advisory Council a number of times for feedback. Uh, same for the Placerville Hills Road work, um, Public Works was there a, a number of times getting feedback, uh, they worked very closely with this, uh, MAC Subcommittee for Safety and Beautification, and will continue to work with them as we move forward. So that's the combination of community outreach for both of these items. Specific to the Placerville Hills Road amendments, looking at our project timeline, um, we are, um, aiming to amend the community plans, we'll bring these forward to the Board of Supervisors together by, I think it's December eighteenth that we're aiming for, the last board meeting of the year. Uh, come early next year, we'll start workshopping and talking with the community about that collaborative and participatory design, and try to prioritize, uh, the projects and align those with funding opportunities. Is it still on here? Still good, okay. Um, there is an opportunity coming up with the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, it's a transportation demand management mini-application, it's called, or a mini-grant, and those are eight to ten thousand dollar grants that enable us to sort of test some of the designs on Placerville Hills Road prior to actually constructing them permanently. So, um, for example, we could paint in some bike lanes temporarily, or put in some, uh, pedestrian refuges with whatever, some materials to, to sort of, and then invite the community out and have them test those designs out before they're actually permanently constructed, so that's a good way to get some feedback from the community. So, uh, we're working on that application, um, and hope to have something in, in concert with the outreach we'll be doing next year. And then, of course, you know, we, we were at the Municipal Advisory Council last night, and my update on that is that they supported, uh, the Amendment Five-O i- in terms of recommending it to your commission. A lot of good community feedback, of course, because Public Works has been working with them over the last few years, so positive feedback in that regard. I think our, our biggest challenge might be just sort of phasing this project and managing expectations and knowing that aligning existing funding, um, aligning funding, whether through, um, existing traffic fees and the CIP with grant opportunities, competitive grant opportunities, that's gonna be kind of a challenge, timing all of that and, and whatnot. So, um, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer some questions if you have them.
Okay, any questions for Nikki, or?
Actually, maybe a clarification.
Okay.
First of all, I chaired that, uh, beautification committee with the MAC for a number of years. One of the things that, uh, we discovered was that the county has a million dollars set aside for Meadow Vista, and originally we worked with county engineering and looked at doing this alignment, and it was going to be nineteen to twenty million dollars to build it. So then we came back and looked at the strategy of phasing this in as money becomes available, matching the grants, using the money available, um, to build these projects, so that's the reason this approach is being taken to, uh, I guess, when we came. So, uh, that's the reason for the change to the community plan, because the old community plan would not allow us to do the things that we wanted to do, so, um, this is where we are, and I'm, I'm really pleased with the county and how they've helped the Meadow Vista community go through this process, so very much appreciated.
All right, Jeff, you have a question?
Co- comment, I guess, more than a question. Um, I, I look at the, the roadway section that, that you had up there on the slide, and, um, it is, it's beautiful, there's no doubt about it. I guess my comment would be a, an encouragement to, to, um, figure out ways of using less landscaping, is the state's going to start dictating our water usage, and the rest of us aren't going to be allowed to water things? Um, not to mention just the, the perpetual cost of maintenance, um, that we maybe kind of start encouraging not just here, but everywhere, the use of more, I guess, for lack of a better term, hardscaping as opposed to landscaping, as a way of, of prettying things up a little bit.
I have a feeling, just understanding some of the transportation-related grants, not a lot of them pay for this kinda thing, there's some maintenance responsibilities, so that, that might fall lower on the list, um, in terms of the beautification, although, you know, like, if the community can identify a way to pay for something that's low water use, then...
And, and to that effect, the Meadow Vista has an arboretum, which is native plants right there, uh, at that intersection with Meadow Vista Road, and so the discussion has been to use natives, which don't take special water, other than the first year while you get them established in the landscape. So, we haven't discussed, you know, how to make that water, uh, usable. And the other thing that we'll have to be addressing, there's a whole lot of curb cuts into parking lots, um, you know, so I'm not sure how much landscaping go, go in, but it's, as a community goes through and looks at the design with the county, I think that's gonna be a nature's...
Good questions. All right, thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
Uh, I wanna open it up for public comment, there's others who would like to, uh, step up and talk about this or ask questions. You give us your name, and, uh, if you could hold your comments to...
Good morning, my name is Stuart Feldman, I'm a resident of the Meadow Vista area since nineteen seventy-five, and I purchased my home in nineteen seventy-seven along Combi Road on a spur called Woodpecker Lane. I originally came to the, uh, Meadow Vista MAC back a few years ago after the undergrounding of utilities was completed, and I mentioned to Supervisor Montgomery at the time that was there a county plan that the underground utilities were tied to in terms of setback and sidewalk interference or whatever, and she said, "If, if it's not in the community plan, the county hasn't defined it." So I said, "Well, we need to do something," and I suggested to the Meadow Vista MAC that we create a subcommittee, and they said, "If you'll be on it, we'll do it." So I, I volunteered, and it's called Meadow Vista Safety and Beautification, and Anders, who was on the MAC at the time, was on the committee, as well as Mike Walker, who is currently on the Meadow Vista MAC. My purpose here today is to say that the MAC is behind us and our committee is behind us one hundred percent, and we have other issues with the Meadow Vista traffic circulation issue, um, issues, mainly a school intersection that has some problems, but that's outside of this planning area, but within this planning area, many of the ideas that were presented today are options that can be considered with that amendment, and we really would appreciate your agreeing to that. On a side note, I'd like to comment on Mr. Moss's, um, comment about that bus turnout. All it needs is striping and the words "bus stop" put in it, no traffic will turn in there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and... Uh, does, uh, anyone else wanna comment on this, uh, amendment? And then I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the Commission for discussion or action.
I'd like to make a motion, um, one, to find the proposed amendments to the Meadow Vista Community Plan circulation element that address bicycle and pedestrian safety, facilities along Placerville Hills Road, and incorporates the two thousand eighteen Placerville County Regional Bike Way Plan, the exempt under SEGA Guidelines Sections fifteen oh six one B three, the general rule in fifteen two sixty-two feasibility and planning study.
Second?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Howgie and a second by Mr. Rokucci, so if I could have a vote from Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Severson is absent, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes this item, yeah.
No.
Second part.
Sorry, sorry, I'm just trying to rush it along here.
Like, like to make a motion to adopt a resolution mending the Meadow Vista Community Plan to enable flexibility in designing future streetscape facility improvements to Placerville Hills Road in the town center of Meadow Vista, and to ensure consistency with the two thousand eighteen Placerville County Regional Bike Way Plan.
Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Steve.
I have a first by Mr. Howgie and a second by Mr. Rokucci. Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're done. Sorry about that. And now we'll move on to our ten twenty item. Uh, of Roseville, and Chris is gonna present this one, so... Oh, yours, Chris. Ready?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Christopher Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. The project before you today is the Habad of Roseville. It's in Granite Bay on Douglas Boulevard. The project site is a one-point-three-acre parcel at the southwest corner of Woodgrove Way in Douglas Boulevard, is just east of Sierra College Boulevard, if you're familiar with that area, kind of the gateway into the Granite Bay area. It's on the left, a right-hand side when you're traveling eastbound on Douglas Boulevard. Uh, zoning on the site is actually split, both residential, single-family, with combining districts of agriculture, minimum building site of a hundred thousand square feet, and two planned residential development, um, numbers of one unit per acre and point four-four units per acre, so just a little sliver of the point four-four, but mostly PD of one. Surrounding land is mostly residential, residential, single-family on the north side of Douglas, residential, uh, single-family to the south, residential agriculture, larger lots, uh, zoning to the east, and commercial and office professional zoning around Sierra College Boulevard. And we'll point out that, um, there is a planned project here and here, it's a White Hawk Project, we'll be talking about with you, uh, hopefully in December, just a note. The site is currently developed with, um, a community center, House of Worship, it's a former, uh, fire station that the congregation purchased in two thousand eight and renovated for their use. It's a single-story mostly with a, uh, former, uh, parking garage facility, you can see it peeking over in the back here. A couple more, uh, photos of the existing building, which would be demolished if the project is approved, and the surrounding uses, um, open space area to the south, uh, two views of that vegetation, um, off-site. So the proposed project is a two-building facility, a sixteen thousand seven hundred square foot community center, that's, uh, the larger building, it's in the northeast corner of the site at Woodgrove and Douglas Boulevard, two stories. It's in the northeast corner of the site at Woodgrove and Douglas Boulevard, two stories with a false third story. We'll talk about that in a bit. A two-story education building on the western border of the site, 6,600 square feet, and parking for 48 spaces. I'll point out, main access to the project is along Woodgrove Way. Currently, there is a right-in-only access along Douglas that will be barricaded, and we'll talk about that in a bit as well. So the applicant is looking for three entitlements, a minor use permit to allow House of Worship and a residential, single-family zoning district, variances to front and side setbacks, we'll talk about those, and administrative approval for a variance to the height of the building. This is an aerial showing the site with the new buildings or proposed buildings superimposed. You can see the single-family development on the north side of Douglas, open space area. This is the Greyhawk subdivision. These are open space parcels, part of that subdivision. And off the map here is the commercial development closer to Sierra College Boulevard. The proposed project, there's the project design, two stories with a false third story. This is the front along Douglas. This is the rear of the building, and this is the side of the building that you would see when you're traveling eastbound on Douglas. This is the parking lot. And the second building would be over here. And this is the design of an education building, a little bit lower key and lower scale than the main building. These are the floor plans of the community center building. The first floor has a daycare facility, worship space, a rear courtyard, and two covered play areas. So these are enclosed within the facade, and then the second story covers these. So it's hard to tell from the elevations, but there's two play areas there. And then classroom facilities on the second story, multipurpose and community rooms and a library here. And then on a rooftop, play area on the southeast corner of the building, so this is the second story, unenclosed. There's facade wall here, but this is a play area with no roof. There's the floor plan for the education building, classrooms on the first floor, and then sleeping accommodations for students and an adult department to supervise the students overnight in a central common lounge area. So we'll talk about the design. Granite Bay Community Plan has an appendix. It was prepared by the MAC. It's design guidelines for the Douglas Boulevard quarter, kind of their vision for the design of Douglas Boulevard, and also a small portion of Auburn-Polsom Road, kind of the main arterials of Granite Bay. I'll point out the design guidelines. The elements you see listed are preferred. They're not mandated, and we'll talk about each of those. The goal is a craftsman design elements, not a true craftsman style. And the proposed design, the applicant submitted a design, it's based off a circa 1920 building in Brooklyn, New York, which is the headquarters of the Chabod movement. And their modeling, their desire to model their facility to match this historic building. And the applicant can talk about this, but there's Chabod facilities across the world that have mimicked this Brooklyn design, and they've asked the county to allow them to do that in Granite Bay. And actually, in attachment C of the staff report, you'll see their design justification request of how and why they think this is appropriate for their facility in Granite This is the original design they submitted to the county staff. We did support the central feature. We weren't too happy with Gothic design for the entire structure. So to the applicant's credit, they came back to us with a new design, with more craftsman style on the wings. We asked them to redesign that a little bit more. We thought it was a little bit too busy. And we got the design that's before you today, a little bit lower key, keeping this a central focus, and the wings kind of a background color to blend in with the Gothic architecture. So craftsman features, and then your Gothic Revival central structure. And that shows you the evolution of the design through their design review process with staff and the applicant and the project architect. This is the education building, much lower key, but similar in architectural style to the community center building. And community plan design guidelines. So I'll go through these one by one and kind of point out how this project complies or doesn't. So the MAC recommends or suggests single-story buildings along Douglas. If you drive along Douglas today, they are predominantly single-story. But we do have examples of two-story buildings, so it's not unusual or precedent setting to have a two-story building at this site. So no, it does not comply with that single-story recommendation. Low-pitched roof lines with gabled roof roofs, you see that on the main building. Overhanging eaves, you see that on the craftsman wings. Wood, brick, and stone, that's what the applicant is proposing for the exterior. Exposed rafters, beams, braces, or decorative brackets under eaves, you see that here on both buildings. Clustering of windows and horizontal bands. We don't see that solid band-type architecture here, so doesn't comply, but it's close. A mix of natural materials, so you'll see brick and hardy board siding and wood elements. Courtyards, chelices, outdoor spaces. There's an outdoor courtyard in the rear. You do have the play areas that would be enclosed here, enclosed here, and then on the rooftop here. Tapet squared columns supported the roof. We don't have that true traditional craftsman look, so we don't have that. Natural landscaping, walkways and paths, there'd be sidewalks internal to the site and along Douglas. External lighting directed downward and shielded from neighbors, that's standard county practice. Earth tone colors, we have that. Articulation of building fronts and roof lines, very much so, you'll see that here. And signs should be low-profile. The applicant is not proposing any signage at this time. May add some signage on the building, and we'll review that at a later date. No pylon signs or ground signs along the frontage are proposed.
Chris, can I ask you a question? Based on the picture, that's obviously Douglas. And right now, the grade is probably three to four feet below the street level. I noticed that there is some import of fill, but is the grade of the main structure going to be at the current grade, or are they bringing it up? Because that picture looks like it's at the current grade of the street.
It's sunken three feet, the applicant is...
So it will be at its current grade, right? It's not going to be raised.
It may be raised a little bit, but it's maybe a little deceptive in that elevation that you don't see the slope, the sunkenness. But I just want to point out some recent projects along Douglas Boulevard that also were required to comply with the guidelines. Country House Memory Care is at the northeast corner of Douglas and Barton Road, which is open. Pondview Park is east of Quarry Pond Center. These are office buildings, not a true craftsman look, very different than craftsman. Also Quarry Ridge proposed office buildings at Berg and Douglas, and the Little Sunshine Decor Facility on the south side of Douglas that is open today. So not a, there's not a consistent design look for Granite Bay, but they do have those features that you see listed in the design elements, such as the eaves, the overhangs, the mix of materials, et cetera. The applicant has asked for administrative approval. Through our administrative approval process, we do allow for an increase of height of not more than five feet or 10% of height, whichever is lower. Typically, grant that through administrative approval process. It's before you today, since it's one of the entitlements being sought. The applicant is asking for approval of one foot four inches or 3.7%. So instead of 36 feet allowed in the RS District, they're asking for 37 feet four inches. And that's to the top of this roof line here. This is, we don't count the chimney height. And just for reference, Little Sunshine's to the east, a daycare center. It's a one-story building, designed to look two stories. They're at 26 feet four inches. So Chabod's about 10 feet higher than what you see today, if you're familiar with that structure. The applicant has asked for variances to front and side setbacks. The project site is 1.3 acres. A minimum zoning is a minimum building site of 100,000 square feet. So it's a legal non-conforming site, so it's about half of this 100,000-square-foot minimum. This just shows you the buildable area with a 50-foot setback along Douglas and Woodgrove, so two front setbacks. And if you, if we did a 30-foot side setback as required, the buildable area of this site is really constrained. But it just shows you the constraint on the corner property that's less than 100 square foot minimum for this zoning district. Requested setback variance, a 50-foot from the edge of right-of-way is required. The applicant is proposing 12.6 feet. You see that in the blue. This is the edge of right-of-way in red. It's along Douglas. Woodgrove, required 50 feet also, proposed as 21 feet. And then the side setback required is 30 feet. They're proposing 10 feet. Keep in mind, this is an open space area here, so not a big neighbor impact. The photos you see here are buildings, existing buildings on Douglas Boulevard that have similar setbacks. This is, I believe this is a bank in the Sierra Commons Shopping Center, just east of the project site near Sierra College. This is Laboo. It has a little bigger setback than this building here, same complex, but also close to the street. And then this is the Granite Bay Professional Center, I believe it's called. This is Little Sunshine's. This is also part of the project. This is an office building, similar setback to the road. I'll point out that this is commercial development for both of these. They have different setbacks, but the setback being requested is not unprecedented along Douglas. This is the Little Sunshine, just a site plan of third setback. Here's the edge of right-of-way. Their minimum setback requirement is 10 feet along the front, and their setback here is 12 and a half feet. So they're actually the same setback as the Chabod project. And it's a little closer up of the setback of Little Sunshine's. Across the street, somebody had asked about the sound wall on the north side of Douglas, how far that is off the road. It varies, but it's a minimum of 17 feet from the back of curb, whereas the Chabod building would be 30 feet from the back of curb. So this wall here is closer to Douglas than the Chabod would be across the street. This does vary. I think it does go up to 30 feet in some portions, but this is one of those areas where it's fairly close to the road. Parking was a big issue with the community. Looking at the various uses being proposed for this project, so you have House of Worship, multipurpose rooms, education building, education facilities, and childcare. Based on our zoning ordinance, total parking spaces required would be 99. The applicant has proposed 48, so about half. They've asked for a variance to that parking requirement from our zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance does allow the number of required spaces to be reduced through the use permit process. We can show and demonstrate a dual use, and the applicant has provided that analysis. You can see the table here, a little hard to read, but it is an attachment D of the staff report, showing when the various uses on-site would be in operation, what their parking demand estimate is, and to show that there's really not much overlap in their operations to the demand for parking. So when we looked at the analysis, these are your big parking generators, your House of Worship and your multipurpose facilities. Combined, there would be 76 parking spots. Looking at the analysis from the applicant, the highest peak demand would be 35 parking spaces on their estimate. And we've conditioned the project so that the multipurpose community rooms and social hall facilities can't be used concurrently. So basically saying, do not use these at the same time so that you can accommodate the parking needs on-site. The applicant did complete a traffic study. It showed that in peak hours, AM peak, 23 additional cars, PM peak, 21 additional cars. Note that Douglas Boulevard along here has 47,500 cars per day. So looking at the traffic impacts, this project wouldn't push any of the existing intersections above to fail. The Douglas Boulevard, Quail Oaks, Woodgrove Way intersection at the project site is already failing, but it is adding additional cars there, and it does exceed our measurement threshold of 2.5 additional seconds of delay. So they'll be required to improve the intersection, and we'll talk about what that looks like. So the project will be installing a center median, a turn restriction. So the cars coming northbound out of Woodgrove couldn't make a left on Douglas, they'd have to make a right out of the Greyhawk subdivision. And then cars coming south on Quail Oaks could not make a left onto Douglas Boulevard. They'd have to make a right towards Sierra College. So we looked at the version of those cars and could the intersection at Sino handle U-turns? And then also the intersection at Cabot Stallman South or Sierra College Boulevard? Was there enough stacking for the traffic, new traffic, to do U-turns there? And the analysis showed that there was plenty of room. U-turns are not permitted at Cabot Stallman South today. That signal would have to be re-timed to allow U-turns. And that'll be a county decision whether we're going to allow U-turns there or force everyone to go down to Sierra College, make U-turns at that location. And this shows that center median that would be installed to block traffic from making this left. They'll have to make a right out. And with this improvement here, this intersection goes from a level of Service F to a C. So it reduces the delays. If you've come out of here, even non-rush hour times, making a left on a Douglas, you could sit here for five minutes at a time. So this would stop that delay. Everyone would be forced to make a right. Cars coming westbound on Douglas could still turn into Greyhawk subdivision. Eastbound on Douglas could still turn into the neighborhoods to the north. The existing access on Douglas Boulevard would be barricaded. The county doesn't want this right-in-only access with the new trips being generated by this project. So it'll be dual-purpose in and out along Woodgrove. And I'll point out that this transportation planning wants this access, this driveway, as far south away from this intersection as possible, just for safety concerns. So that adds to the constraints on the site. Can't have the driveway here. It needs to be at this location. So the applicant eventually, or desires to have access right-in only off of Douglas Boulevard, at some point, if they do that, they'll have to extend this turn pocket to the east. So that shows that extension today. It just narrows, it widens for the turn lane in the Woodgrove. They would have to actually build a turn pocket here, as you see here, to get this. We analyzed it in the environmental document, but the applicant is not proposing to construct this early on. So not much habitat on the site. There's a wetland area, riparian area, kind of an overhang from this open space area, this little strip here. Everything else has pretty much been developed or graded to date in the existing facility, and then this vacant area of the site on the western border. Tree impacts, very minimal. One tree in the middle of the site would come out, and then if that turn lane's extended, two trees, oak trees along Douglas Boulevard would have to be removed. So the project was presented as an information item and then an action item at the September 5th Granite Bay MAC meeting. Issues raised were the adequacy of parking. Many of the public didn't like the need for variances. I thought that the intensity of the use was too high for such a small site. I questioned the safety of daycare uses on the ground floor along Douglas Boulevard, traffic impacts to Douglas Boulevard and neighboring streets. I weren't happy with the layout of the site, and also didn't like the project name of Chabod of Roseville, and suggested it be Chabod of Granite Bay or Chabod of Plesser. They did make a recommendation to approve the project, four yes and one no vote. They did have a couple of conditions. The MAC suggested that Woodgrove Way be signed as no parking. The MAC suggested that Woodgrove Way be signed as no parking to eliminate what they thought could be a parking nuisance in the Greyhawks Division. If cars couldn't park on-site, it would start parking in the residential neighborhood. I did reach out to the Greyhawk HOA. Their position, they did bring it up at the board meeting, their position was they didn't see a need for no parking signage, that if it was no parking, it would also, obviously they couldn't park either. So their approach was to keep an eye on it, and if it became an issue down the road, would revisit, potentially restricting all or a portion of Woodgrove or other neighboring streets as no parking. The applicant is looking at changing the name. I don't believe a decision has been made as of yet. It would have to be brought up by their board of directors. And that's not an issue that the county would be involved with. And with that, staff recommends adoption of the mitigated declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program for the project. Approve the minor use permit for a house of worship with accessory elementary school and preschool uses in the residential single-family zoning district. Approve the variances to front and side setbacks, twelve foot six inches along Douglas Boulevard and twenty-one feet along Woodgrove Way, where fifty feet is normally required, and ten feet along the western property line, where thirty feet is normally required. And approve administrative approval to allow a thirty-seven foot four-inch building height for the main building, where thirty-six feet is normally allowed. These will be subject to the findings found in the staff report. And if the commission does move to approve the project, we do have one amendment to finding three B. And I handed that out, and I'll read it to the record. It just adds to a variance finding, says due to restricted access to Douglas Boulevard, a full access driveway is required for Woodgrove Way, a safe distance from the intersection, adding further constraints on the site, pushing the buildable area to the north and west. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just one question at this time, Chris. How does a county or any government agency go about regulating the use of a property once it's been established? You know, I'm talking about the parking reduction and parking and the two uses of the major parking generators. Let's say that there was a violation. I mean, what worse or, how would a county go about enforcing something like that? I've never, never seen one of those conditions on one of our projects.
It definitely is unusual. Having conditions of approval about having, providing adequate parking is usually pretty standard on a commercial or an institutional project. So we do have two conditions, seventy-two and seventy-three, that talk about providing adequate parking. And if your operations in your normal use of your facility provides or generates a parking nuisance, that the county's going to make you change your operations to accommodate the uses on your site. So it could be your worship, your education use, or your events. And you'll see that in other churches, including Granite Bay, where Bayside, for example, they have a lot of parking, but even that's not enough, so they'll do shuttles to bring people from offsite to the facility. So I'm sure the congregation would love to have that problem of having more congregants than parking allowed and do shuttling, but at this time, they don't see the need for all that parking. And the county agrees with their analysis that the forty-eight parking spaces being proposed is enough based on the uses and the timing of those uses on the site. So it is a code enforcement if it becomes a nuisance. It can say, just based on my conversations with the HOA, that they'll keep an eye on it. There'll be eyes and ears in that neighborhood. If parking becomes an issue, I'm sure we're going to hear about it.
I think Rich was next.
Yeah, Chris, I was a little bit puzzled about the third floor. And, you know, that space, obviously, is going to be used for something.
I believe it's just dead space. It's just going to be hollow, not heated, not air-conditioned. It's just, it's a signature design element. It's not habitable space.
So there's no intention in the future to develop something up there or use it for storage or anything?
It's just to keep the proportions of the building to match the Brooklyn facility. But it is only two usable floors in that building.
There won't be any stairs or anything up to it?
I don't believe so. Not even storage? It's a hollow attic, false facade.
Okay.
Anything else at this time, Rich?
No, I think that's it for now.
Okay. Nathan?
Hey, Chris. Wondering if there's any stipulations on grade levels, if they wanted to add a high school at some point to the school. Certainly, that would increase the number of required parking spaces. So are there any limitations to adding any grade levels or additional levels of education?
We didn't limit what grades could be in the facility. The only limit we placed was on the number of students in childcare, because they have different parking requirements, and they're capped with their state license. But it's capped on the maximum number of students, potentially, I mean, if they're high school students, they could be driving. But I think there's enough cushion in the parking and their uses that if some of the students drove, there would be adequate parking on-site. And if not, they're going to have to change their operations to limit the number of students that can drive to the school.
The max is a hundred and thirty right now, right?
Right.
What we're saying. Any other questions for Chris before I have the applicant step up? All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. Would the applicant like to make some comments?
I'm Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Marcus Laduka, thirty-two hundred Douglas Boulevard. On behalf of Rabbi Yossi Kork and the Habad House congregation, I'm pleased to be before you tonight, or today, with the recommendation for approval from your staff and also the overwhelming support of the Granite Bay MAC for what we see as an exciting and landmark project, not only for the Granite Bay community, but also for South Placer in general. The staff report and the presentation today have done a very thorough job in not only analyzing the project, but also the issues that have been raised by members of the public. I'd like to highlight just a few items for you as you consider our requested entitlements. Before I start, however, I did want to extend our deep-felt appreciation to the Greyhawk Homeowners Association for their graciousness and their openness to the Habad House and our proposal before you today, and to continue to work with us as the project is implemented. First, I'd like to mention the uses before you. The house of worship, a community center, and religious education classes already exist on the site and all serve a religious purpose. What Rabbi Kork and the congregation seek is a new permanent home on the site in place of the many decades-old former fire station that has been converted on an interim basis to a worship space for the Habad Lubavitch movement of Judaism in the Granite Bay community. The Orthodox Habad Lubavitch sect of Judaism is a worldwide movement that has brought the tradition and practices of this sect of Orthodox Judaism to many in the Jewish community, including the growing Jewish community in Granite Bay and in Placer County. The building presented before you today, and you've seen the pictures, takes its inspiration, as Chris mentioned, from the seven-seventy building in Brooklyn, New York, which is an iconic site for the global Habad Lubavitch movement, using classic building materials used throughout Granite Bay, including brick and stucco, along with the precast concrete and stucco trim around windows and doors, as Chris highlighted. And as noted in the staff report, the project has a number, and I think I counted ten as it was listed down, of craftsman elements that are included in the project and the building as the project architect, gorgeous architecture worked with staff on the project to include a number of those elements that are seen on some projects and not on others on Douglas Boulevard. The one thing we did want to note again is those commercial buildings nearby, which are immediately to the west on Douglas Boulevard, both north and south. You see a lot of brick, for example, in the, in some of those buildings, including the River City Bank and the Starbucks. There's also a couple of pictures, and I don't know, Chris, how I get to those on the site relative to other churches, again, not on Douglas Boulevard, but other churches in Granite Bay. This commission has approved a variety of looks, whether it be the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints on Cabot Stallman and also St. Joseph Morello Catholic Church. You have a variety of different looks for churches, religious institutions that this commission has approved. To get to the key issues, first, traffic. As you know, traffic impacts are measured in terms of peak hours and what those impacts are. Here, the main traffic for the week is all off-peak. The preschool starts at nine AM. Religious education classes start at nine-thirty. This is not the typical elementary school or high school where you have all the trips show up within thirty minutes in the morning, right in the middle of the morning rush hour, or after, all the sports teams are done practicing at the end of the day, right in the middle of the afternoon rush hour. In addition, what the Habad has experienced at the site is that parents, families that are sending their kids to religious education classes, typically, it's just not, you know, one parent driving one student, and the forty-two students have forty-two cars. It's usually multiple family members, multiple children in a family attending. So the number of peak trips is even less than what would typically be anticipated by just a mathematical formula, looking at the number of students. Because of the type of education that's offered here and the off-peak trips, what you typically see is trip rates generated by a school based on number of students, using the International Transportation Engineers Manual. But because of the characteristics here, those don't apply. You can't use them. They're not valid statistically relative to the analysis. So what our traffic engineer did was look at the existing operation, the forty-two students, and then extrapolated out to one-thirty as to what would be the traffic generation, and that generated the traffic analysis you have before you. As Chris mentioned, at Woodgrove and Douglas, you already have level of service F. The idea was for, even though we're not making it worse F, we are increasing the level of delay. So the mitigation was to preclude the left-hand turns out of that onto Douglas from both Woodgrove and Quail Oaks Drive. I would note that at that location of Douglas, as you're coming down a long stretch with a heavily wooded median, the speed limit's fifty-five. I used to live literally down the street from this, and taking left-hand turns out of those locations across two lanes, when people are, a speed limit of fifty-five going faster, you take your life in your hands. So it's actually improving the level of service at that intersection all the way down to a level of service C. In terms of parking, again, as Chris laid out, typically, what you do in a code analysis for any type of non-residential use is you look at, you know, the number of square footage, multiply it by the code requirements, and it's additive. And so that gives you your parking analysis. That came up at the table in your staff report and shown today, which is the ninety-nine spaces. However, here, you have uses used at different times. The religious education classes are during the day. The services are Friday and then evening and Saturday. And then there's community events in the community center. Staff placed condition seventy-two on the restricting the ability to use the worship space, and they can't be used at the same time as the community center. This is very common. I've represented a lot of denominations throughout the region on churches, also represented a lot of private schools. And the idea of restricting a type of use so that you're not, in essence, parking to the maximum, but instead parking is to the demand at certain hours of the day is very, very common. It's one of the reasons why, for example, in a shopping center context, you never park a project for the day after Thanksgiving or the day after Christmas, because the parking demand is so much greater during that time. So again, we are in agreement with the limitation there in terms of can't use the worship space at the same time as the community center and vice versa. As to the various requests for the, variance requests for the setbacks, again, as Chris pointed out, the need for the two-way access driveway off Woodgrove Road and placing that at the far back of the site literally pushes everything to the north and to the west. There's no other way to construct on the site because you have that two-way access point. You know, we had the potential, we could have said, well, let's not have variances, and let's apply to rezone the property and do a general plan, community plan amendment, in which case, as you saw from the examples to the west on Douglas Boulevard, those buildings are even much closer than even what we're proposing. But as you, this commission well knows, rezones and community plan, general plan amendments tend to get people in Granite Bay a little bit excited. So we decided to work with your staff, with the existing zoning on the property, with the design, with the restrictions relative to access, and come forward with the variance requests that, again, are similar to what, in terms of our setback, to what other non-residential buildings to the west and to the east of us on Douglas Boulevard. So because of those other uses that have similar setbacks, there is no grant of special privilege here relative to the findings you can make, and I know some of the comment letters that came in, there is not a grant of special privilege if you're enjoying the same type of privileges under land use regulations that other properties around you are being able to utilize. As for the projects massing, the massing and size of the project is necessary to accommodate not, you know, just the requested uses, which are also existing uses, and the exercise of the faith by the congregation of the Habad House. So that massing and the intensity of use have additional meanings relative to what is needed to serve the free exercise of their religious faith, which has other implications relative to looking at that type of use on the site. Relative to the building height, the one thing we wanted to point out is, if you look at the site, we have an oak woodland, there is no adjacent land uses. There's oak woodland to the west and to the south, and then to the east, you have Woodgrove Way and more open space. To the north, you have Douglas Boulevard. So again, the two, this is a two-story building. To address Commissioner Johnson's comment, again, the third story is a faux third story. It's a design element. And so this, the issue of, that you saw in some of the comments relative to aesthetics, well, from the west, the south, and the east, there's no view of the building. You are going to literally be seeing, have an open space, so you don't have adjacent land uses. You don't have residential budding up to the property or other land uses. Relative to the north and cars coming down Douglas Boulevard, as I mentioned, the speed limit in this portion of Douglas Boulevard is fifty-five miles an hour. As you're heading east toward the lake, you are crossing a very heavily wooded area in the open space area, and then you have a project that sits down three feet from the road, and you're going to have a very fleeting look at this relative to the public right-of-way. I would also want to say that if you, once this building were to be built and you're standing on Douglas Boulevard on the sidewalk, I would dare anyone in this room to be able to stand there and say the difference between a thirty-six foot from thirty feet away versus thirty-seven feet four inches. I think it's just, it's literally, you would not be able to tell. We believe the staff report, the presentation today, and also the mitigated negative declaration have done a very thorough job analyzing project impacts based on the special studies that the Habad was required to do under the direction of the county. We see that there are no significant environmental effects that are left that haven't been mitigated. And so we would ask your staff, we would ask you to join your staff and the Granite Bay MAC, the overwhelming support at the MAC, and approve the project that's presented to you today, subject to the eighty-six conditions of approval and the twenty-three mitigation measures in the mitigated negative declaration. Our project team is here to answer any questions that you may have. We would ask for the opportunity at the close of the public hearing to be able to get up and address any comments raised on the project during public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Any questions at this point? Okay, I'm going to let Rich go first.
Okay. You know, I may not have been listening very well, but you were talking about the basis for the setback variance. And were you basing that on what other properties are, or were you basing that on something unique for this particular?
Well, you have, you have two aspects. So you have, the first is relative to the site itself. There's a, you need to have a two-way access point, driveway. So that goes on the Woodgrove, on the southern portion of the site. In order to have that meet the dimensions of the county requirements relative to driving and drive aisles and back and forth, fire access, you have to move that to the far south end of the site. It can't be closer to the intersection. So suddenly, the developable area of the site shrinks even more. It gets pushed to the north, and it gets pushed to the west, because you have to have It gets pushed to the north, and it gets pushed to the west because you have to have this drive aisle with throat depths and all the rest. So in terms of the basis for it is that we lost developable area and everything got pushed. So you'll hear that this is a self-induced variance. It's not self-induced if, in fact, you have to have access, you need two-way access onto a roadway, a public road, which is a requirement of the county. So that, having that where it needs to be, not up near the intersection, but at the far south end, pushes everything further to the north. The variances that we're asking for are that enjoyed by other non-residential properties on Douglas Boulevard, both to our east and to our west. So this is a non-residential project. So it's an institutional project, but it's non-residential. So relative to those uses, in terms of your findings for the variances, the basis is you can't have, grant special privileges to one property over another. Conversely, you can't deny a property privileges that other properties that are similar situated enjoy in terms of non-residential uses. So the factual basis to make your findings on the variance would be on that basis, that there are other properties that this commission has approved to the west and the east of us that are non-residential and have similar setbacks. So we're not asking for a grant of special privilege in that, in this case.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
We could go back, Chris, to the, I think it was the slide that said questions, showed the building and the site plan. Thank you. Two big differences I see here, the renderings basically show a completely open front, no landscaping, no planning, very little in front of the building. The site plan shows quite a bit more vegetation out front. I don't know if there's a condition on, or, but if the opponent would agree to ensuring that that vegetation has some height to it as a little bit of a screen?
Well, again, one of the problems with renderings is we typically ask the architect to strip out anything so you get to still view the thing, but it's not the view that you're approving.
Correct.
If you're approving is the one here with the landscaping, you have a series of trees there on Douglas, both taller and shorter trees and landscaping, but if we put those in on that one, you suddenly would not be able to see much of the project.
I understand that, and I guess my, what I would like is some assurances that the landscaping I'm seeing in this, in this site plan is trees and not shrubs?
I think it's both.
Okay.
I think it's, again, it's both that are there. Maybe our, I don't know if our architect would like to address that at all, or Adam or Brenda?
Yeah, they are trees proposed out there. This is mainly highlighting taller and bigger smaller trees, but those are not supposed to be shrubs. They're going to be shrubs below those.
Just wanted to make sure, thank you.
For the record, that was Corinne McDonald from Borges Architecture, the project architect.
Any other questions at the moment? Do you have one, Nathan? Go ahead.
Mine's one of safety. I think I just need some education on, you know, a long stretch of 55 mile an hour road may be different than a building that has a 10-foot setback at an intersection. And so with cars traveling at a high rate of speed, is there any concern about cars impacting this building in an accident, being that close to the road with that high rate of speed?
Well, you have a turn lane that is part of the project improvements. Again, if we do allow, if we seek in the future to have the right-in-only over Douglas, that issue is addressed by the condition that would require the D cell lane on Douglas to be sent back quite a ways to the west. That is addressing exactly that comment you raised about a traffic safety concern about people having adequate distance to be able to get out of the main line of the Douglas Boulevard, move to the right to be able to turn at the intersection, or if we do add the right-in-only, that's why that lane has to go so far back because of the speed of cars. So that is, that is the issue, is traffic safety and people not creating an issue on the main line of Douglas Boulevard.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Before I open this to public comment, I'd like to kind of go through kind of how we're going to do this so that we have some order to the process. Just to let you know that obviously there's been quite a bit of emails and letters that have been presented to the planning commission, to the staff and to the planning commission on this project, and we've had a chance to review them. So if you're going to comment on, go through the detail of your comments that you've already presented in writing, it's not necessary to do that. I would suggest that you just highlight those if you want to bring them up again. But I think the detail's not necessarily needed at this point because we've obviously reviewed them. I would ask that you hold your comments to three minutes. Again, we'll be using a timer for that, and you have, as long as it's green, you have, you're good, and once it goes to yellow, you have a minute to wrap up, and then I would ask you to conclude when it reaches red. So I will open it now for public comment, and if you will give your name as you come up. Anyone? One? Come on up.
Good morning. My name is Julie LaGrange, and I strongly support this project. Thank you. And I didn't send an email.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your comment. Sir, do you want to step up?
All right, speak fast. I didn't.
No, that's all right.
Only learned about this a couple of weeks ago.
He's got three minutes, so just give us your name.
I'm all for a project. I hope they're going to grow. They've already grown. My only concern is the liability the county is going to now assume. I'm glad county council's here to hear my comments.
Could you give us your name first?
Oh, sorry. Robert Coibian, C-O-I-B-I-N-G-I-O-N.
Thank you.
Okay. 1974, I joined the California Highway Patrol. I retired in '09. My last 29 years was in Sonoma County. For a number of years, I lived out of my house in Bodega Bay. I worked Highway 1, two-lane highway. Now, I'm bringing this up to show you the exposure you're going to have on this county. I handled an accident, husband and wife, in a beautiful oval, very safe car, come around the corner of Highway 1, hit head-on by a person coming the other way on the wrong side of the road who had passed four or five cars, didn't get back over before it turned into solid double-yellow lines. Big accident, injuries. Two years later, I'm in court testifying as to what happened in the accident. Judge declares that the driver of the car that was on the wrong side of the road, 98% at fault, Caltrans, 2% at fault. Under deep-pocket liability law, the gentleman driving the car, no insurance, no job, no house, nothing, who paid $4.2 million to that couple? The state of California, Caltrans. Now, you've talked about a little traffic here on Douglas Boulevard, it's 55. Is there anyone here that would believe that occasionally people go over the speed limit there? Maybe they go 60 or 65? Okay? We haven't talked about pedestrian safety. I haven't heard anything about crosswalks going across that roadway. In the California vehicle code, anywhere there's an intersection of two roadways, there is a crosswalk whether marked or not. So if people can cross the roadway there, and if cars are going at 60 miles an hour, they're traveling 90 feet a second, and I always, when I had accidents like this, I knew where the point of impact was because that's where the shoes are, the human body's 150 feet down the road. Okay? My concern is public safety and the exposure you people are now going to assume for the motoring public, because if I live up in the, whatever the street is, the housing development north of Douglas there, and I want to go to my post office, which is over there in Granite Bay, I have to now turn right, go down two traffic lights to Sierra College, make a U-turn, and come back this way and head on over to my post office. But in this little drive down to Douglas and back, I might be struck by a person who, maybe they had a medical seizure or something while they're driving. I get hit, and now I have an accident. Okay? So in the future, since you have constructive notice here of that possibility, gee whiz, that person in the future might get an attorney and say, hey, wait a minute, back here, you had a chance to do something about the traffic to allow people to still make their left- and right-hand turns there, put a signal in there, might be safer, but there might be an accident in the future where the county's going to be liable for the injuries. Okay? My concern is pedestrian safety and the fact that people can't make a left or right turn when they reach Douglas from the north or the south. Okay? Not anything else. That's my concerns.
Right. Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. My name's David Harris, Granite Bay resident. I'd like to remind you all that 10 years ago, this was a fire station when there was less traffic back then, and they, I believe they sold it because you can't pull out on Douglas, so to alleviate that, they put the truck room on Woodgrove, which is the current building in the back of that, so when the trucks could pull out on Woodgrove, they could pull out on Douglas and go left or right. And it was still difficult to do that in a fire truck with lights and siren on. So I believe that's why the fire department got rid of that property because it was just not feasible for what they were intended to use it for, and they may have pulled out 10 times at the most every day, and they decided to get rid of it. The other issue I have is, when you come into Granite Bay, you got this beautiful Granite Bay sign, "Welcome to Granite Bay," and then on the right, you're going to have the HABAD of Roseville, which doesn't make sense to me, and at 1:00 in the afternoon, my truck lights are going to come on because I got this three-story building that's blocking the sun. So I'm opposed to a 12-foot setback when it says in the general plan 50 foot. I think it'd be nicer if it was way back in and maybe drop down to two stories. But thank you. I hope that is not approved at the, the design that it's currently up there.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, Cheryl Burkema of Granite Bay. The HABAD project as proposed is selective enforcement of zoning and planning laws. Ask for approval of a project with self-induced variances and provide special privileges and entitlements to the applicant. Granting these, I know you've received this in comments, but granting these is a violation of multiple state and local laws, including SEQA and California Government 65853. The proposed variances and use permits should not be granted. Environmental analysis is lacking in several areas. I also submitted these comments. I believe that with the number of potential significant impacts in the MND that an EIR is required. Besides the setbacks in traffic and parking, the intensity, the actual use permit, the language in the use permit is very disturbing. It doesn't limit the number of events, it doesn't limit what activities can happen, who is going to actually go in and tell the HABAD that they can't use some activities within the building. Once this building is there, it's there, and what's going to happen is, it's going to put code enforcement on citizens. They'll be complaining and complaining, and there'll be court situations. I know someone else is here to talk about that, but the actual intensity of use is being downplayed, and I'd urge you to look at the use permit and look at the language in the use permit because it basically says, we can add events and we can do what we want, if you really look at the language. So I'm very concerned about that. I would look at that. In addition, there was nothing that said anything about the occupancy in the building. I contacted the fire department and the building services, and there are no calculations anywhere in these 157 pages that talk about the number of people in these buildings. So we looked at that for parking, we did not look at that for traffic. There is nothing that said anything about traffic of the actual events. Those are going to be the heavy events. This is, by the rabbi's own admission, going to bring in regional activity, so it's basically a regional event center on a community-sized parcel. The county previously has stated that the property does not meet the standards for hardship. The applicant's claim for hardship is self-induced by the intended use, not the grounds for granting a variance. I will point you to the variance findings for parking in 2009, and I'll read quickly. "There are no special circumstances applicable to the subject property." This is the county's response. "The strict application of the zoning ordinance has not been found to deprive the subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under identical zoning classifications." So I would disagree with Mr. LaDuca that this is a hardship and deserves any special variances. "The granting of this variance will constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in vicinity and in the same zones district. The variance would not authorize a use that's not otherwise allowed in the zoning district. The granting of this variance does, under the circumstances and conditions applied in this particular case, adversely affect public health and safety and is materially detrimental to public welfare. The variance is not consistent with the Placer County general plan and the Granite Bay community plan. This is in 2009 on this exact same property. The applicant in 2009 already received a use permit and boundary adjustment reducing setbacks. The applicant knew the zoning and regulations when they purchased the property. The applicant's intended use is to run a regional-sized church on a community-sized parcel. The real hardship would be with Granite Bay residents if these illegal, self-induced variances, entitlements, and special privileges were to be allowed. I recommend to the county that the applicant have an EIR be performed, the use permit be modified to restrict usage, operating hours, number of events allowed, number of services allowed, and to keep within the project within the residential zoning requirements that it has." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I would like to, my name's Sandy Harris, and I'm here representing the Granite Bay Community Association, and I would like a couple more minutes to present my project.
All right.
I'd like to give her my opinion because she represents my opinion. I want to explain to Mr. LaDuca why the community gets so excited whenever a project comes up here and is asking for a lot of things that we don't think it's entitled to. When Loomis Incorporated, a large area of the Loomis Basin, was without a development plan, recognizing the area was trying to establish its own identity, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to develop a new general plan for the 22-square-mile area separating it from Loomis Basin general plan adopted in 1975. After years of being referred to as Folsom Lake, Roseville, et cetera, the Board of Supervisors responded to residents' requests and officially named the area Granite Bay in July 1987. That's also about the time the Granite Bay Community Association got started, and we got very active in working on this plan. County staff worked closely with MAC and the community members to develop a plan for Granite Bay. After two years of extensive public input at MAC meetings, 13 Planning Commission hearings that were held up here and lasted all day and took a long time, and two Board of Supervisors hearings, and the supervisors came to Granite Bay in an afternoon session and a night session, the plan was finally adopted in 1989. It was a grim battle because at that time, there were only about 6,000 residents, and there was tremendous pressure from outside sources to zone much of the area for high-density development with extensive commercial along both sides of Douglas Boulevard. Placer County staff received an award from the American Planning Association for their work on the plan. The award cited the involvement of residents, the effective blending of zoning requirements and land use plans, and the retention of a rural atmosphere for the area. In 2008, county announced the 89 plan would be updated, and after considerable input from the community, agreed to only update the policies with no changes to land use. And they got a lot of pushback when they even brought up redoing the plan because people thought it was a pretty good plan and it was developing accordingly, the way we had envisioned in the beginning. A committee of residents, stakeholders, MAC members, and county staff held monthly meetings for about two years. We met at the Eureka School, the office there, and we met with county staff. They were open to the public, and we did regular updates to the Granite Bay MAC. The Board of Supervisors adopted the updated plan in 2012. The property of HABAD was purchased in 2008, and they would have known when the, what the vision of the Granite Bay and Douglas Boulevard were. While we respect the desire of the congregation to emulate the design of a HABAD in Brooklyn, New York, we ask that respect be given to our community plan and all the work residents have done to develop that plan. have done to develop that plan. It is stated in the staff report that there are about six Habbads in the world with this appearance, the closest being Los Angeles. Granite Bay is a community of about 21,000. We are a community, not a city. We aren't Los Angeles, thank God. It is stated in staff report that there is a very small Jewish community in Granite Bay, and this is a regional facility. A check of Wikipedia notes, "There are about 18,000 Shabbat Lukavitz Orthodox members in the United States, with the majority of them living in the Brooklyn area." The two-story building with a three-story facade at the entrance of Granite Bay are not reflective of the neighborhood, nor does it comply with the suggested design guidelines for Douglas Boulevard. The side view of the structure when driving east and west on Douglas shows a three-story facade that is unattractive and doesn't seem to serve a purpose. And Chris, could you put that slide up there, the proposed project that shows the design? It was right at the beginning. When you look at this building and you're driving east and west, you're going to see that center portion sticking up. And it just, it just sticks up there. It doesn't have a purpose, and from the back, it just shows that. And I was sitting here thinking to myself about Frankenstein and how they took all the different parts and put it together and ended up with a monster. And that's kind of what I think about this building, and I think staff did a great job redoing it from the original. And they tried to get some different elements in it, but it just doesn't go together, and it just doesn't reflect Granite Bay. And I know there's a letter in your packet that shows what this high building would look like, three stories, with the setbacks they're asking for. And it's just, you know, you're going to be looking up like that when you drive into Granite Bay. And you don't always go 55 miles an hour when you get to that intersection. You're pretty much stopped for one or two lights before you can get through it. So you're going to be sitting there looking at this. Attachment study shows that the building massing is necessary, and the project complies with Policy 32, Section 9 of the Granite Bay Community Plan, that states that buildings shall be of a size and scale conducive to the character of the immediate neighborhood. All the commercial buildings near the project and on Douglas and Granite Bay are one-story as preferred in design elements and landscape goals for Douglas corridor. This project does not meet that policy. And even though some of the buildings might look a little high, they don't look like that. They are generally one-story when they're, when Chris was talking about the setbacks. Those buildings don't have the impact that this one would have, two stories plus that third-story facade. Our community has 10 houses of worship. Three of them are on Douglas Boulevard. The Shabbat has been active since 2008 and has been a good neighbor. Knowing what the needs of the congregation were and what the Granite Bay Community Plan goals and policies are, it appears that the 1.3-acre parcel zone for one residence does not meet the needs as stated in their design statement. As stated in our letter in response to the MND, "There are concerns with the aesthetics, building design, landscaping, traffic, setbacks, variances, and parking variances. We do not believe the parcel qualifies for variances under special circumstances." The Brooklyn-style edifice will be the main entrance to Granite Bay. People will wonder, "How did that building get approved?" And only a small portion will know the significance of that design. Please direct applicant to submit a design to fit the project and the goals and policies of the much-vetted Granite Bay Community Plan. And this is our community plan. This is my personal copy. I like that the staff put my name on it because I've been working so long and so hard, 30 years on all this. And inside, on the first page, there's a list of all the residents who worked on this plan, and there are about 22 of them. And over here, it lists the planning commissioners. Commissioner Rakuchi, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Moss, and Commissioner Sevenson all reviewed this plan and supported it. And we're asking you today to support it now. Thank you. And I'm turning this in for the record.
Did anybody else want to make comments? And again, I would ask you to hold it to three minutes. I gave her an exception because she was representing the community.
My vocabulary not so rich for three minutes. Anyway, my name is Flora Gendelmann. I am new in area. I live now in Roseville. I support 100, 200, 200% this project. I don't like word intolerance. I don't like word ignorance. I think it's, the architecture is great. I am civil engineer by professional. I look from outside, I understand. And I think this project will benefit Placer County, people, children. This is all what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, I'm Chris Johnson again, and I did submit comments, but, you know, they didn't somehow make it, and I think it's because I have a crazy internet provider. So I will hand this in if you don't mind taking it when I'm done because it comprehends exactly what I was emailing you. So I'm glad I came today. Okay, first of all, I want to say that Rabbi Korig has a great ambition to serve his and grow his Jewish Orthodox community, and that's admirable and inspirational. And this is why he wants to build a Habad similar in appearance to commemorate the one that's in Brooklyn. His is a growing faith movement across this country. But what we all need to understand is the role and the function and what goes on at Habad House. It really isn't simply a little house of worship like a church or even a local synagogue. And those things, just like the application that he put in in 2009, have limited hours of operation. And that was in the use permit that was agreed to in 2009. It's a regional facility, as we've already discussed. And if you really study and learn about what goes on at Habad and what their mission is, it's open every day, all day. The rabbi and his wife are expected to welcome visitors at any time. And it has many uses, as we've already covered. Educational rooms, shul for the children, schooling, daycare, worship center. And a really key part of Jewish faith is celebration. Mealtime celebrations are really important. Myself, I've gone to some of the Seder dinners, and they go on for hours. So, you know, things could go late into the night, and I did notice they do have an open patio up above that could be maybe a little problematic. The mikvabass, the sleeping rooms, a lot of people don't comprehend what that's about. It's very important because you're not supposed to drive home. I can't believe that far already. Okay.
You've got a minute.
So as the Habad movement has grown across the, well, first of all, Habbads were first built in California in the 60s, and I think it was already mentioned. UCLA has one, was one of the first, and also Berkeley. And they were built in very appropriate locations near universities. Now, what we're seeing is that the movement is growing, and a lot of them are moving into residential communities. But that's problematic because of the high usage of the facility. And it's conflicted with local zoning ordinance. That's why we're here talking about this today. And there's been numerous complaints, and I really didn't know about this until I just Googled the word "Habad zoning." And there's, this is like eight lawsuits right here, and I made copies for all of you if you're interested. And there's, on the back, I put a recent story that just is going on right now about one in Baltimore that is being forced to be torn down. I really don't want to see this happen here in our community. I don't want our friends, our Jewish community, to be under the pressure of people, you know, being upset because they're maybe going too late into the night and so on. He has great plans, but I feel like you're putting 20 pounds of potatoes into a five-pound sack. And with all the issues that have been enumerated here, I think that the right thing is, is this really needs to be located on a commercial property, kind of like St. Anna's, Greek Orthodox, because that way you can have a lot of people come, you've got sufficient parking, you've got excellent road access. So what I'm asking all of you guys to do is not approve this because I feel like we will be like these other communities that have these problems. Boca Raton, Pleasanton, Baltimore, Minnetonka, Minnesota, Toms River, and these are all recent issues. I don't want to see us set up for lawsuits. Let's really encourage Habad to move to a really good location. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, it looks like we have two people coming up.
My name is Peggy Just Peterson. I live in Granite Bay. My comments aren't so much about the Habad House itself as about the process that I've been observing here lately. It seems disingenuous to me to say the setback variances aren't unprecedented when the comparisons that were mentioned are zoned commercial. It's also disingenuous to say that Granite Bay doesn't have a consistent design look when the commission itself is the one that's allowed this design inconsistency. And the use of the phrase, "This inconsistency with the community plan isn't unprecedented," which Chris said multiple times today, is exactly why the commission should stop allowing these self-induced variances. Please support our community plans. And I'd like to take you up on your challenge, sir. You said that none of us could stand at the roadside and look at this building and tell the difference between 36, whatever it is, 36 feet and 37 four inches? Well, then why wouldn't you build it to the requirement? We can't tell the difference. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Good morning. I ask you to be patient. I have a little fear of public speak.
Okay. If you could give, sir, your name, please. Your name, please.
Relax, we don't bite.
That's all right.
Good morning. My name is Janet Source. I lived in the Hidden Lakes Community in Granite Bay for the last eight years. I am here today in full support of this project. I'm a little emotional today because of the massacre that happened just last night in Southern California. Rabbi Jeffrey Myers from the Tree of Life Synagogue in Squirrel Hill, Pennsylvania, which is a suburb of Pittsburgh, and it is a suburb next to where I grew up. My uncle was Jewish. He attended that synagogue. He sent shortly after the massacre 11 of his members less than two weeks ago. We need to take hate and intolerance out of our language. I'm sorry. I can't do this. Hate and intolerance, that seems to be the underlying tone of all that I've heard and read regarding this project. This hateful language is veiled in terms of development language, but the underlying tone is intolerance and discrimination. This language is being used as a reason to prevent this project from being approved by the underlying tone of intolerance towards a particularly religious group who are peaceful, loving, God-fearing people who give back to their communities in more ways than can be discussed here in this forum. Throughout history, different religions have built their places of worship in accordance with historical buildings relating to their own religions. During the past century, Jewish synagogues looked like Christian churches during Hitler's rule in Nazi Germany. This was done in an attempt to protect themselves during this awful time in history. We can never allow something like this to ever happen again. The Jewish Community Center, Habad of Roseville, shouldn't be forced to move away from their rich history to comply with a very small group of close-minded, intolerant people who think they are speaking on behalf of the entire Granite Bay community, which they are not, who are trying to prevent this religious group from building a place of worship that is aligned with their rich history. In light of the massacre that happened in Pittsburgh less than two weeks ago and the hostile environment we find ourselves in, we as a community need to step up and support this faith community and do whatever is in our power to protect them as individuals and as a faith. The Jewish community is an important member of this great country in which we all live. Thomas Jefferson said, "We are to have an equal respect for others regardless of their faith." There needs to be a zero tolerance for hate in our country, our state, our cities, and municipalities. It starts by abolishing the mindset of NIMBY, "Not in my backyard." If there were any other, if this were any other denomination making this request, there wouldn't be this outcry of opposition, except perhaps a mosque, which again, would reveal the bigotry and intolerance of those opposing this project and the lack of understanding and compassion to allow US citizens, in accordance with the Constitution, to freely worship with religions in a house of worship that reflects their own faith. To expect this synagogue, as one person wrote, "To relocate to an empty school off the beaten path, is discriminatory." They wouldn't be suggesting this to anyone else. The country, the county has acknowledged where this Habad House is located is a failed intersection, but it currently has no plans to fund the project to address this. By approving this project, the applicant will take over the cost of improving this intersection, making it safer for the entire community at large. This applicant has met all of the requirements set forth by the Planning Commission. With that said, I wholeheartedly support all of the organization is planning to do with this property and will do whatever I can to support them achieve their goals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Thought we already have the letter that you submitted earlier. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment and ask if the applicant would like to come back and make any response to some of the comments that were made.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, do we have a, one of the slides that shows the back of the site from, in terms of the open space area? Either an aerial or a, shows the actual trees back there. I'd like to just, just a few of the comments, if I could, Mr. Chairman. There was a comment about traffic safety. Example used was Highway 1, and one thanked the speaker for his service over many years to the Highway Patrol. But, you know, Highway 1 is not a separated road. It's two lanes at highway speeds, and there's no separation. Douglas Boulevard has a median down it. We are adding a median to prohibit the turns onto the roadway. In terms of pedestrian access, the way that the roadway has been designed is there is not pedestrian access across Douglas Boulevard except at signals. There's one at Cabot Stallman South and one at Sino, and that's how people go back and forth. People aren't just roaming around Douglas Boulevard relative to that. The comment about the three-story will block the sun. If anyone's been out to the site and looking at the open space to the west, to the south, and to the east, but particularly to the west and the south, the oak woodland back there, the very thick oak woodland, those trees are far higher than this building will be. So in terms of, there will literally, that's what I said, there will be no visual impacts from those directions simply because the trees block out everything. In 32 years of doing this, I never had anyone say a three-story building blocks out the sun next to open space. Relative, we've addressed the issue about the variances, and this is in terms of the privileges enjoyed by other properties. The function, it is not just looking at exact zoned properties, in this case, it's non-residential properties. There was a lot, there was comments regarding you need to restrict the events, you need to restrict people attending the events. I was hoping not to get into this at all today, but those comments forced me to. In the late summer of 2000, the United States House of Representatives and the United States Senate unanimously adopted, I know in these times, no one thinks anything gets unanimously adopted in Congress, an act known as the Religious Exercise in Land Use and by Institutionalized Persons Act. It is known by the acronym REI-LUPA. REI-LUPA looks at a statutory scheme to protect the free exercise of religious, of religion guaranteed under the First Amendment. A religious exercise is defined in the act as "any exercise of religion, whether or not compelled by or central to a system of religious belief." And you say, "What does that have to do with land use?" Well, the use- Well, the use, the act also says that "the use, building, or conversion of real property for the purposes of religious exercise shall be considered to be religious exercise of the person or entity that uses or intends to use the property for that purpose." The core piece of, it's not a long statute, which is amazing for Congress, because everything's usually 400 pages long and no one knows how to, it's almost impossible to read, is this provision. "No government shall impose or implement a land use regulation in a manner that imposes a substantial burden on the religious exercise of a person, including a religious assembly or institution, unless the government demonstrates that imposition of the burden on that person, assembly, or institution, A, is in furtherance of a compelling governmental interest, and B, is the least restrictive means for furthering that compelling governmental interest. A burden need not be found to be impossible to be overcome, to be held substantial. When a religious school has no ready alternatives, or where the alternatives require substantial delay in certainty or expense, the denial of the application can be found to be indicative of a substantial burden." And just in case you're wondering, in terms of, there's been a lot of litigation over REI-LUPA in the intervening eight years. Cases where stated concerns for denial where traffic, parking, and intensity of use, where the evidence in the record as here does not support those bases for denial, have been found to violate federal law in the form of REI-LUPA and the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. So where people start talking about the ability to say, "Well, we need to restrict gatherings of folks here for religious purposes," that crosses the line. You don't have that discretion. In terms of this being a regional draw, the HABAD, over the years, has had a number of large educational forums, not only for their congregation, but the community at large, that particularly in religious education relative to history. They have had speakers come, survivors of the Holocaust, and other leading speakers that have draw very large crowds. Those are held off-site. They have been held at the grounds, at the Placer County Fairgrounds, the Sunset Center. There was one on last week, on October 30th, where a Holocaust survivor spoke, as well as a rabbi who went back to a German town who had had its synagogue destroyed on Kristallnacht, which ironically is the 80th anniversary of the destruction of all the synagogues in Austria and Germany is tomorrow, and by Nazi Germany. So they had speakers come to speak, and those large crowds are at events off-site. They are not held on this site. So in terms of a regional draw for education, and there's a lot of non-Jewish folks who attend those events, when the one rabbi came to speak who had survived, Dr. Mangala, in the camps, 1,000 people showed up at the grounds, at the Placer County Fairgrounds. This is a resource for this region, not just for Granite Bay, but for the community. But again, those regional events are held off-site. They are not held on-site. This is a fairly low-intensity use relative to the uses on the site and what you would typically see in a religious school, which I've represented quite a number of those throughout the region, or religious institutions, which I've also represented throughout the region of different denominations. This is probably the lowest intensity use I've seen yet in, and I've handled literally dozens of those types of projects. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission might have.
I have, I have one. That same, leave that same slide on, the one they had. The one I wanted to ask Mr. Laduka about. That, okay, that one there. The, the medians and the turn lanes there, they're not there now, are they?
That's correct.
Is, is that going to?
Well, there's a, there's a turn lane right now, but there will be, in essence, there will be a median place. So there's, right now, you could turn onto Quail Oaks, heading north, going east on Douglas, heading north onto Quail Oaks. There's a turn lane. But this will put, channelize the turn lane so that cars cannot go from Wood Grove, turn left onto Douglas.
How about heading, how about heading west? Is there a turn lane there, too?
Heading that way?
Heading west?
Yes.
There's a turn already, those turn lanes are already there.
Correct. It's the channelization, that, that median, that raised median will prohibit cars from turning out into the, at that point, a high-speed location.
Okay. Yeah, I actually drove out today from Roseville, and I drove out past the property. That was a mistake before this meeting because I went up quite a ways, and I actually went into one of these turn lanes, and then I waited for the traffic. I came back and the traffic was stuck, stuck way on this side, so I got to go for rather slow there. But I think that that would be a safety addition, that's for sure. I'd like to ask one other question, maybe the staff can answer, but you maybe can do it, Ms. Laduka. One of the slides showed that they said that the front of the building, because that had issues with the setbacks or these questions with, the edge of the building, the front setback, it will be less at a greater distance than the sound walls on the other side of the street?
Correct.
From the, from the?
Which were 17, which were 17 feet, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Yeah. Oh, do you have one, Andrew?
Yeah. In the original design, did you take a look at putting the building at the back and parking up front?
You can't.
In order to accommodate this?
The problem is, is you have to have that drive aisle. You, you can't, the idea was, the county's been fairly adamant about access on Douglas. There could be no egress. You had to have a two-way driveway on Wood Grove. The only place, they would not allow that anywhere on the northern part of the property. It had to be pushed to the far southern end. So that's why you couldn't have a building there because there, you had to have access, including emergency vehicle access, to be able to make the loop throughout the project for the fire district. But there, there is no other way to, where to put that driveway. So you further restrict the site. If you put the buildings back there, you would literally have no access to the site. You would have no ability to go in and out of the site because you would have cars accessing Wood Grove so close to the intersection that as you have cars turn on Wood Grove from Douglas, they would right, right immediately be hit with a driveway cut. And that is, that's prohibited. You just can't do that anywhere in the county, or frankly, in any cities. Because of the trap, it creates issues in the main line, and you are asking for accidents because cars would be stopped turning right, and they'll back onto the main line.
I guess I was looking at coming in at the existing location you're proposing, but immediately bring it up and do parking there at the corner of Wood Grove and Douglas.
Well, the access on Douglas will be closed, except if we want to have it in the future, it's egress only.
Understood.
Yep.
No, I'm talking about basically setting the building back and having parking up there at the front of Wood Grove and Douglas as a way to get your setback and also have a parking.
You'd have a building about a third of the size.
All right. That answer your question? I'd like to kind of follow Andrew's question. Phil, maybe you can answer this. Is, they're not looking at doing it now for that right-hand turn off of Douglas Inn, which would then, they would have to extend a kind of a safety pocket to turn in. But would, would the county be receptive to, if they did that now, to have that right turn in, and could they do a right turn out as kind of a main access into the property versus coming off of that other street?
Yeah, we would prefer not to have the right turn out.
Is it because it's too close to the intersection that you have the issue with that?
Yeah.
And as we were told through, when we actually discussed that, you, again, the idea is having a decel lane. There's no ax, you don't have room for an axel lane, putting a right-hand turn lane, and you're entering a roadway where the speed limit's 55. So cars would be turning right, and they'd be turning right into the decel lane that goes all the way to the intersection. So you would be asking for traffic conflicts, so there can be no egress onto Douglas. That, they were pretty adamant from the beginning, and that's been fairly consistent on other projects I've represented along Douglas Boulevard.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Then I'm going to bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
Chairperson, if I may, real quick before getting to comment, I just did want to touch on the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act.
Can you speak up a little bit at the microphone? Because either I'm getting deaf or whatever. Maybe that's, I shouldn't have said that because you'll agree with me, but.
So I did want to touch on the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act that Mr. Laduka had mentioned. That act prohibits the government from implementing land use regulations in a way that it imposes substantial burden on the exercise of religion. If the county does impose that substantial burden, then its actions are subject to strict scrutiny, which is one of the higher standards in the law. So as part of that analysis that the commission should be considering and that the court would look at is whether or not any conditions that were being imposed on this project, whether they were consistently applied through Granite Bay or they're being selectively applied in such a manner that could be perceived as being discriminatory. So something to just consider while you're evaluating.
Thank you for clarifying that some more for us. Appreciate it. Okay, Jeff?
I just have a few comments for starters. Like Mr. Harris, I have been a firefighter out of that when it was a South Placer fire station. It was prior to Douglas Boulevard being improved to two lanes in each direction. Back actually at a time when on a good Saturday, traffic would back up from Folsom Lake clear out in front of the station. Despite the increase in the amount of traffic that exists today by number of vehicles, it actually flows substantially better on a good day than it used to. I was also chairman of the Board of Directors when the fire district sold the station to the church. And the reasons that the station was no longer desirable to the district had to do with, one, its location. Years ago, South Placer used to respond clear into what was called the Lavoti Track, which is down off of Auburn Boulevard by Interstate 80. It was a little island that belonged to South Placer that the city of Roseville didn't really want to be involved with service of. And so the need to dash down Douglas all the way through Roseville and that was there, but that has since changed, and that need no longer existed. There was also the construction of another station fairly much right behind this, the Shortways and Tree Lake Village, and another one on Olive Ranch Road. So positioning of stations made this one kind of not necessary. In addition to that, when Douglas Boulevard was improved to two lanes in each direction, a median was built out in front of the driveway of the station, which made it so that a truck leaving the truck ramp could only turn right onto Douglas Boulevard even if the need was to go left. So it compromised response times. At the development of the subdivision further down Woodbridge, conditions were placed on that developer to assist with the building of the metal building, which became the new truck room, so that traffic could come out and go either right or left on Douglas Boulevard off of Woodbridge. And, and that, what, for a while at that station, be viable still. So that was kind of the, the history behind it being timed to, to go up for sale as opposed to have been revamped into a more modern station. But 30 years ago, it was a very tired-looking building. There's been a substantial amount of work put into it now, but it is still a very tired-looking building. I believe what's, what's being proposed is a substantial improvement to the view the residents of Granite Bay have been treated to for the last 30 years plus. We have to, I think, remember that the plan that's being referred to is a general plan, not a specific plan. In general, this is what we would like to see, but that doesn't dictate specifics. It's why there's the ability to come in with other proposals. I think that by this not being a commercially zoned piece of property, which I believe it easily could be if they chose to undertake that, it gives the county the ability through a conditional use permit to place conditions on the property that will ride with the property that can be enforced as long as it is used for the proposed use. Those conditions, I believe, if violated, can cause the loss of that use. And I think that is an advantage for the community versus them coming back with a proposal to rezone this commercial and not needing the discretionary approvals that are being asked for today. So, and I think that the county has made good use of the conditions that they've applied to the project that, as I've read them. And, and just the last comment with regard to that, the, you know, code enforcement throughout the county has always been complaint-driven. We don't have code enforcement offers running around looking to give tickets and issue citations. They consistently respond to complaints when there is a problem. That's how it's always worked, and, and I don't see it working any different here. But I've been around the whole time. They've been in existence and functioning on that property now, and I have yet to see an event at that location where parking has been at or even substantially near capacity. It is a very low-key-use facility, and, you know, I think nothing would, would probably make the rabbi happier than having to bus in parishioners from another location if parking became too short. But in all honesty, I see that as being a long ways out, if at all. And that's just, that's my two cents, here.
Thank you, Jeff. I'd see your lights on, Richard. Do you want to?
No, I'm sorry. I turned it off.
Okay. Rich?
Yeah, I guess I'm a little bit confused. Condition number 72, I believe, or in this, in one of these right in here, implies that all the parking has to be on the site. But then we discussed that there's parking along Woodbridge Road. And so at any rate, is, isn't that parking along Woodbridge Road available for this site, too?
Chris is going to respond.
So the Wood Grove Way parking?
No problem.
Was an issue raised at the MAC that the public in the MAC thought perhaps if this parking lot can't handle the parking needed by the uses on the site, that people would park in the residential neighborhood to the south. So this condition kind of locks the applicant into their parking analysis that they submitted to say that the big use generators would not be operating at the same time. Thus, the 99 parking spaces aren't needed, 48 is adequate. So this just says that the two rooms can't be used at the same time in order to provide adequate parking on site. And then they follow up, the condition next, underneath it says, "HABAD of Roseville should make appropriate adjustments as necessary and directed by the county to adjust its separations so that parking demand is adequately provided on-site. HABAD of Roseville visitors, guests, and employees shall not park on nearby streets." It doesn't mean to say they can't shuttle people in from offsite, such as what Bayside does. So there's no Wood Grove parking. I mean, you can park on there today. The concern was, would it overwhelm the neighborhood, and should we, the county, put up no parking signs? And the neighborhood basically said, "We don't see as an issue yet. We'll keep an eye on it, and we'll let you know."
Okay, so, so people can park along that road if they're using the HABAD?
They could, but as designed and as the applicant submitted, they do have adequate parking on site, so no one would need to park on Wood Grove Way.
Okay, nobody gets a ticket?
Pardon me?
Nobody gets a ticket?
No one would get a ticket.
Okay.
Anything else for a moment?
Oh, that's it.
I'd like to just, just say something on what Richard just said. As a member of the St. Rose Catholic Church in Roseville, we had a kind of similar problem. We had tons of parking in the back of the facility, but a little, one of the, I call it side street coming in there was, people would park there, two or three, and it kind of basically restricted the road going in, a short little piece of roadway, basically one lane. And years ago, I asked the city council, and I was a member of it at the time, I think, to basically, no parking during, during church service time. So people, those two or three cars that were wanting to park along there needed to park someplace else, although there was always adequate parking someplace else. So I guess what I'm saying, I'm backing up staffs, if, if there is a parking issue later on, that no parking signs can be installed, or at least installed during weekends or whenever the church service is, maybe not all the time. Anyway, they can be installed later times. Anyway, they can be installed later in time.
Any other comments? Do you have anything? Chris, because you put back your recommendation, thank you very much. So I guess I would ask the Commission what they would like to do.
Chairman would allow. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, and I guess we have to pick each one individually.
Do we need to wait for Andrew's to get back?
Yes, we'll wait for him to, hopefully he'll be back.
While we're waiting, I'm assuming these need to be done separately?
And will this go to the board automatically or only by an appeal?
So yes, motions need to be made separately. This would not go to the board unless the action is?
Unless there is an appeal.
Right. Thank you.
While we're waiting, maybe I can ask Chris a question, and he, or the applicant can answer it. But this business is about the height, and it's always mentioned, I think by Wayne, that the property, when I went by today, I didn't realize how low it was where the buildings are. So that elevation will probably continue to be close to that. They're not going to build up that property.
Right. The applicant says it'll be three feet.
About three feet below the roadway level. That, that kind of reduces the height of visual, too, on that.
I guess I should check. We're waiting, I'll see. Now we've got two of them missing.
I guess we're taking, I guess we're taking a five-minute break.
Maybe we should have called for, who's vice chair here today?
Jeff, I think you were starting.
If we're all present and accounted for, I would motion that we adopt mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the Habad of Roseville project.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Moved in second, please. Sue, roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Rokuchi. Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
One point just before the next motion is made. All of these recommendations should be subject to the findings contained in the staff report. It's indicated in the slide, but just when you make the motion, just save that at the end for each motion.
Very well. I would then further amend my motion if that need be for the record to include that for item number one. As amended, would be for number three?
Number two. And number B.
Is for number three, the variant.
That would be number three.
Oh, just, only has to be mentioned on number three?
Right. But all would need to include, subject to the findings found in the staff report.
Okay. So I would move that we approve the minor use permit for a house of worship slash community center with accessory elementary school and preschool uses in a residential, single-family zone zoning district, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been movement seconded. Roll call, Sue.
I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Rokuchi. Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would move again that we approve the variances to front and side setbacks, 12 feet, six inches along Douglas Boulevard, 21 feet along Wood Grove Way, where 50 feet is normally required, and 10 feet along the western property line, based on the amendment read earlier in the meeting, and subject to the findings of the staff report.
That's a petition, county council, is that? To address the change?
Yeah, as modified. It's modified.
Second.
Okay, it's been movement seconded. Roll, roll call, Sue.
Another first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Rokuchi. Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
I guess, and finally, I would make a motion that we approve an administrative approval to allow a 37-feet, 4-inch building height for the main building where 36 feet is normally allowed, subject to the findings of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, it's been movement seconded. Roll call, Sue.
A first by Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Rokuchi. Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, okay, thank you everyone. If anyone wants to appeal this, if the cost is $602, you have 10 days, that would be appealing it to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, everybody, for your participation, and that concludes our agenda for the day.